Good evening. I'm calling the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on this January the 3rd, 2023. Please bow your heads with me. Gracious Father, we just once again thank you for the many, many blessings you bestow, not only on Columbia County, but just the whole Augusta region. Father, we're truly blessed to have great growth, great citizens. Father, I do pray for the first responders, those first ones out to protect life in this county, and especially those folks who go downrange of the military to protect our freedoms. I pray now that you'd bless this meeting, help us to make wise decisions, ask all these things in your Son's name. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, and to one nation, to God, physical, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Welcome again.
Thank you.
New commissioner, ready for your opening speech? No, I'm just kidding.
Okay, good.
Commissioners, you have the minutes from the December 20th meeting in your packet. If you've had a chance to review them, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Second. Any questions? On favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Onto the agenda, I believe. One item is requested to be postponed, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, we would request that we postpone item J1C1, which is Resolution 2301 regarding the abandonment and surplus of John Deere Parkway until the January 17th, 2023 meeting. That item is still, or actually, I believe, finished legal review today, but we need a little more time on that.
Consider it removed. Item G, we have the election of officers, and each year we elect a vice chairman. Anyone feel like proposing a name?
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate Commissioner Gary Richardson for the office of vice chairman.
Second. We need to have some serious discussion. Will you accept if nominated?
We'd gladly.
Well, we have a nomination and a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Under special recognition, I believe we have some folks with youth leadership here. If you'll, wherever you are, if you'll stand up and tell us your name and which school you go to, what grade you're in. Welcome. We now have a presentation from Sonal Kapura on the thrombosis awareness month proclamation.
We're putting her to work first.
Mr. Couch is gonna leave that.
County Board of Commissioners, you have your claim, January 2023, thrombosis awareness month, and recognize the efforts of the thrombosis forum, North American.
You will just state your name for the record.
Good evening to the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County. Mr. Renee, and ladies and gentlemen, I am Oj Chitrey, and with my colleague Sonal, we will be presenting about thrombosis. So what is thrombosis? Thrombosis is a condition that's better known as blood clots. Blood clots can block veins or arteries, which reduce blood supply to vital organs. This can lead to serious complications such as stroke, heart attack, respiratory system damage, and even death. In this diagram, we can see the backside of a right leg of a person. These blue lines represent veins. In the first diagram, we can see a healthy vein, where the blood is all moving at a constant rate. In the second diagram, we can see the pooling of blood in pockets in the vein. This has significantly slowed down blood flow, and this can slow down blood to vital organs. In the third diagram, there has been an injury to the vein, and a blood clot has formed. And in the fourth diagram, we can see a rare case of part of that blood clot breaking off and becoming an embolus. This embolus can travel through the veins into the lungs and eventually cause a serious condition known as a pulmonary embolism. Now I'd like to give it to my colleague, Sonal.
Thank you, Oj. Now I would like to talk about the incidence of thrombosis. Thrombosis affects as many as 900,000 people and takes more than 100,000 lives. Every minute, a blood clot is formed, and every six minutes, a person dies due to thrombosis. Thrombosis kills more people than breast cancer, HIV, and car crashes combined each year. I would also like to emphasize that blood clots can affect people of any race, gender, or age. There are many factors that can increase blood clot susceptibility, such as age, dehydration, or diet, lack of physical activity, long periods of inactivity such as taking a long flight, obesity, and oral contraceptives. As a member of the Global Thrombosis Forum, I have a message to Columbia County residents. It is a responsibility of every citizen of Columbia County to make sure that our citizens are well-trained and protected against thrombosis, a deadly killer. I would also like you all to be aware of blood clots, maintain a healthy lifestyle, and contact your doctor if you feel any pain in your legs or backs. We would also like to thank the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Sorry? Did I jump ahead already?
I did, sorry. I was fixing to make a motion to...
Oh. Where was I? Consent agenda. The agenda's in front of you with the consent items. They've been through committee, received the necessary votes to be placed on the committee. So if they still meet with your approval, we'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Any questions? Any other motions you want to make?
Not yet.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion carries. Onto the debate agenda. No, actually, now that we have the board appointments. Commissioner Malier.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the reappointments and appointments, as listed on the recommendation sheet, to the appropriate boards and committees.
Second. Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. They are appointed. Onto the debate agenda. Commissioner Malier, you're gonna take the first one.
I'm gonna take that one. I make a motion to approve the request for a master sign plan for property located at tax map 072A parcel 368, subject to the conditions enumerated in the December 15th Planning Commission Report.
A second.
We have an instance where the owner of the building is looking to put additional signage on his building. The building cannot have additional signage without having a master sign plan, so the master sign plan has been applied for. Currently, they could put additional signage, as you see, on the side of the building and the rear of the building. However, they're looking to put all that signage on the front of the building. So what they're asking for is permission to add, go back, go back, this sign here and this sign here is what is currently not allowed by code. With the master sign plan, however, we're moving the signs from the rear of the building and the side of the building and allow them to go to the front of the building. There's already signs located here and here for the tenants, and you will have a sign here for the actual address of the building.
So it's not additional square footage, it's just moving them around?
It's basically relocating all the sign square footage to one side of the building.
If there were multiple tenants on different floors, where would that sign?
Well, that's this, with this master plan, they would, they wanted to change the sign, they'd have to come all the way back through this process again. So they do have a sign, a monument sign out on the road that has blank spaces for additional tenants, as you can see here. They do have space there. But with this master sign plan, if approved, they would have to come back if they wanted to change anything additional.
Any other questions? There's a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. You abstain? Or yes, one abstention? Onto you, Commissioner Skinner.
Yes, sir. Item B2, I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the current PUD for property located at tax map 082J parcel 016, subject to the conditions enumerated in the December 15th, 2022 Planning Commission Report.
Second. Ms. Jennifer Lowers. If it will, please just state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to five minutes. Thank you.
506. In relation to the property, the traffic runs in front of my property, and the creek is in the back. So I have flow of water and flow of traffic, and that's how I'm impacted directly by it. What I'm here for you tonight is to ask you to look at the fact, as it is in front of me, and it is now, I understand that it has a plan right now to break ground on a property that you're looking at. And that you're looking at. I know that when that breaks ground, whether it's this property or that property, that you all are gonna take a lot of heat and answer a lot of questions, and that's necessarily fair to you guys, because you weren't there as a whole, right? Your dynamic has changed. And it's not the same commission now, and we're not the same as the community, dramatically, since that approval went. So I am asking you to look at the fact in front of you, this is your second chance to do this, and judge it based on its merit and what our needs are right now as a community. Right now, as a community, never, our neighborhood was out, it wasn't, some of the neighborhood was why they were there, and there wasn't a lot of traffic. Now, because of the opening, we'll come through and cut through to go to West Lake, from West Lake to the school, Zaxby's, and everywhere. In my place, my Oak Chase, I can't back out of my own driveway at certain times a day because all that traffic is concentrated at a certain time. That's what you might not see in your commission. So it's making a very dangerous situation. Walkable neighborhood, blocks, and now those two things are changing, and that's a problem. So when Mr. Lawrence proposed this plan, one of our big concerns was the amount of spaces, parking, parking, and you know you're intended to only give me five minutes, but we know how that works out. We know that the intention is not for everybody to be rerouted. It happens, and it's already happening, and we see it happening. That is gonna increase that issue. So we are asking you all to not approve this plan. Forward, taking consideration to scale and what you're doing. Supposing right now, as it stands, when we are already struggling to fill commercial spaces, dozing a perfectly good home in only an acre, and replacing it for commercial spaces, heat from Reed Creek, that's why I moved. I didn't move for Zaxby's, sir. I moved for Reed Creek. And I know you've done West Lake, and you've done a great job, I know you took heat for me. Difference with West Lake is they haven't, don't have that luxury. We also don't have an on and off access point from that, so they're gonna come through. So I'm asking you on that to remember that we didn't ask for Mr. Lawrence to do this, ask for it to be rezoned. He has a working plan that he can break ground on right now. I understand that it comes at an extra cost to him, but your staff did a wonderful job making him aware of those costs at the time when he chose this property. If the property isn't suited for the cost, not to put us, on us as neighbors, to continue to absorb the cost. There's already been cost and loss of time to not just us as neighbors, but to TR Ready, to the other developers that may want to be moving forward, and that locks them out of this process too. Not just about what's good for us as neighbors, us versus Lawrence, about what's best for us as a community. And a healthy community is good. If he can't fill those spaces, or he both fills those spaces, and we as a neighborhood are too broken, too tired, too run down to go shopping because we're already been stuck in traffic all day, and we don't have clean drinking water, it's not gonna help. So we need to look at this property and say, what can this property support right now at the time in front of you? What are its needs? Are not an abundant resource. Get worn down. It takes me five years to make you one and send it to school. Okay, so that's what I'm asking you to do. Our resources and what it costs our community to push forward before the infrastructure. I'm not asking you to shut him down on what he does. I'm asking you to help it reach its full potential. And I think after meeting your staff and all of my neighbors and all of the others, and better than what was put in front of me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Ms. Danielle Farr. State your name and address for the record, please.
It's for Eddie's plan. Large stormwater. Yeah. Turns. Hurries. 1,006. I don't need. Put it together. Only entering. Which should be... Possibly. Building, high business. That's a lot of traffic. It's a problem. Enter. All this, five. The. Letting me in. I have. Backwards.
Matt, so is the, does the driveways are gonna impede, I'm sorry, the median, is it in the way of the driveway?
So it's currently shown your concrete median planter is here. That's your actual curb and gutter median, the sign is located roughly here is where your sign's at. This area here is all striping. Majority of this striping on the upper end is worn out, half-striping.
Thank you. That's what he's gonna explain to us. Thank you.
So the median, as it's shown here, it does not impact the concrete median. Anything, you might have to do some restriping in this area to allow the full movement.
And I was, actually, I just, I wrote some notes down, just tried to keep up with some of the points, but so from a median perspective, I know, I know where the sign is, I see it every day. Is it gonna impede the median? Is the median gonna have to be torn out?
As it's shown here, no. I guess the point she's making, hard to draw real fine, there's a required 20-foot structural buffer. So her point is that line should extend out. Assuming that's your point, and I don't want to speak for you. Okay, so that's her point. But if you'll also look, the actual property line, property line is roughly here. See that the radius, that's actually on county property, not on property owned by Mr. Lawrence. He'll have to tweak some to make sure that 20-foot buffer goes all the way to the property line, but once they leave the property line, that buffer no longer exists. That's right away, it must be clear for line of sight. Can't have a buffer out in the right of way. Does that make sense?
You helped me too.
Assuming that's the point you were, you're making, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for, but...
It's, but in terms of wastewater, obviously, there's not a retention pond on this site.
There's not a retention pond shown. Obviously, he hasn't done a whole lot of design on this, because he doesn't have permission to build. I wouldn't have spent my money designing either. However, there's a note stating that underground retention will be provided during design. Anything that falls, you can, curb and gutter line, that's your, that's basically your parking lot. So anything that falls in that's gonna be taken by that curb and gutter, it's gonna go into that, that pond. Your building pad, which is here, should also go into that pond, impervious surface. Now, again, I don't have his design, he doesn't not put contours, but some of the impervious area may also drain into that pond. I don't know yet, I hadn't seen it. But by code, he cannot let water leave that site faster than it, after he's built than it did before he built. Volume, the velocities, that type of thing, so. Discharge point would be into an existing storm system, so this line here is an existing storm system. At some point, he would tie into it maybe a doghouse in this location. It's not shown on this map, but that line goes up, it crosses under, goes through the Zaxby's parking lot, and dumps into Reed Creek on county property. There, it flows under Furious Ferry and over into Bowen Pond. But this, this stormwater here would not actually make it to Reed Creek Park, the east of that, where it discharges.
Was there not a plan to have a, maybe I misread it, but just like what we have over in the...
An underground retention system?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It says on his plan that if he goes into design with this plan, he would have to design that underground retention to hold that water and release it at the same rate it's releasing now.
How many parking spots were added from the previous plan to this one?
I think he has 26 now. I believe it was 17 before, I'm, something like 17 or 18 before and 26 now, I believe it is. So it is an increase in parking, and that's due to some additional square footage. The footprint is the same, however, he's going multi-story, so he's got additional square footage. Our calculations for parking are based off of square footage and the use. Depends on the use and the square footage to how many parking spaces are required.
Draw a line showing the traffic patterns. If you come out right here, and you want to turn left to go to Furious Ferry, you can still turn left, or you cannot because of the striping. Like draw, if you're going out of here, and you want to turn left and get over Furious Ferry, draw, draw a line and show us how you'd get out.
If this WL line, I'm gonna draw a WL line the best I can there. Our, our legal guys over there might tell you better, but WL lines you're not supposed to cross.
Right.
So you would have to eradicate those WL lines to create the ability for that person to cross. The concrete curb and gutter for the island does not have to be modified as shown here. If he makes his driveway a foot narrower so that he can stay inside the buffer there, or stay out of the buffer there, I don't think he can make it work. But again, this is a conceptual layout, not true design.
This is not right in, right out, where people have to go through the neighborhood when they leave, correct?
The way it's shown is not right in, right out. I mean, obviously, we have to do some striping changes, but if it was gonna be right in, right out, we'd have some sort of pork chop island out here in the middle of it to force people to right, right in, right out. We wouldn't give them that full-blown wide driveway if we expected them to go right out.
Do you have a, the plan that's currently approved that we could show?
That is not it. That's the, if you're back at, while we're here, if you'll back up, that was the plan that was proposed, that was withdrawn that she mentioned in '22, I believe it was, '21. He was proposing putting the building in the back corner. However, as mentioned, there is an access easement through here to get to the property to the north here, playing east, but north by the compass. Therefore, we couldn't allow that building to sit there. So that's why he withdrew. He knew it was not gonna get approved, so he withdrew that. That is what's approved. As you see, he basically shoved the building to this corner over here, then flopped his parking over here to this side, and it does save him some, some work. We have an existing water line that runs roughly here. As you see here, you'd have to relocate that water line around his building by shifting the building over, not required to relocate our water line.
Property above it. Property, it shows a right in. That been approved or not?
On this property here? I'm not aware of approval being done, however, with its length and its distance from the, close, distance from the stop signal, I believe the DOT would give him a right in, right out. There's a median already out there, so he wouldn't have a full-blown... There's a median already out there, so he wouldn't have a full access, right in, right out, probably get two of those, one at the top, one at the bottom of the property. I can't speak for DOT.
We go straight out to Furious Ferry.
Sir?
Out to Furious Ferry.
Yes, sir.
Not going back through the right of way.
But again, that, he has rights to that property, nothing.
You'd have to exit through the traffic light. You'd never get out.
You wanna make a left, you'd have to get it, but we obviously wanna make interconnectivity amongst parcels along that road the best we can. We don't wanna have driveways every hundred feet. So interconnectivity for commercial is a good thing for the traveling public along Furious Ferry Road.
Matt, as far as the four conditions that were sent over from planning and zoning, we talked about the buffers and landscaping, which is more than it was before. Second was the photometric plan, I meant the lights.
Right.
And also the light shall be shielded and directed away from residential properties. Can you show me where the lights would be?
I can't. I have not seen their light plan, but if it was me designing it, I'd, I'd wanna put my lights along this side and shine them this way to light my parking lot. Obviously, you'll have to have lights out here, but, uh, to light this, but. I am no lighting engineer, so I don't wanna speak on behalf of who they hired to do that.
So it couldn't be something on top of the building shining back towards the buffer, towards the home?
And there's even, there's even some, uh, I believe wording about the signs on the exterior of the building, they're not internally lit signs, so you won't see a glowing sign. You will see a, a wall sign that is lit where the light's shining onto the wall that has to cut off at eleven o'clock at night to, again, eliminate some of that light pollution.
Any other questions, comments? We have a, a motion second on the floor. All in favor, see if you can find by raising your right hand. Motion carries.
Chair item, uh, RZ two-two-one-two-oh-nine, I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for a gym, property located at tax map zero-seven-eight-V, parcel one-thirty-seven-C. Subject to the conditions enumerated in the December fifteenth, thousand-twenty-two planning commission report.
Bag it.
Go back one sheet. This is a conditional use for a gym in these, this area here, highlighted in blue, is, is for that one suite in this development. Again, using a gym, all right, the use of a gym in this zoning is a conditional use, which requires commission approval. One of the conditions on here is about public parking. Uh, they had originally showed some parking in the rear, however, our fire marshal had some concerns about keeping that free for fire apparatus to, to make their movement around the building. So one of the conditions is they have to give us a plan showing the striping of the, of the public parking spaces they're gonna be using. This is to move forward.
Questions? If we have a motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Legal matters?
Illegal matters.
A request for a view by committee. We have a couple of people that have requested to speak, Mr. Chris Price. Will you also just state your name and address to the record?
My name is Chris Price. Um, I'm at three-two-three Greendale Place here in Evans. So recently, you know, this, uh, this board has come to the conclusion to revoke Stay Social Tap and Tables liquor license. Dragging all that, a lot of us know the whole situation and everything, but I came here to, to get some clarification on some of the rules and laws here of the county. I guess just for my own sake, because I was, you know, I was a patron of them, they were a patron of me as a business, back and forth. So, you know, here, Commissioner Richardson said previously on record, "We can't choose what laws we do and don't obey. We have to apply all the rules evenly across everywhere," right? So it's, so, you know, we all know Backyard Tavern has recently also closed. They actually forfeited their liquor license. But their license was suspended, and it was suspended after, come to find out that after eleven years of operation, they had no kitchen. Which is the exact same violation that Stay was under, which is the definition of an eating establishment, right? So that definition says that you have to have sink, you have to have a hood, all that sort of stuff.
Commercial kitchen, right?
Yes.
Right. And it was under that as well, that same thing that it said fifty percent total annual gross sales from prepared food, not exceed alcohol, right? Which is, again, the same thing, uh, or the same definition. However, their, their license was suspended. They were also giving away beer during their trivia nights, um, which is also a violation of the ordinances six-ninety-two-A-one, which says you can't give away any alcohol. Ironwood Tavern, up until just recently, had a sign on their window that said that their kitchen closes an hour before the bar does. Which actually is also under the same definition of an eating establishment. Which says, "Full-service kitchen, offering food service every hour such establishment is open." But, and I think somebody came to them recently, some code enforcement or something, but they were only told to just take the sign down instead of.
You were?
From what I've heard. I, I don't know that anything has been done at all, really. I haven't been up there, I haven't really talked to anybody. It's just what I hear, is that it's been addressed, but.
Let's not go on hearsay. Continue with the items that you know for a fact.
Lastly, Sugar and Spice Cocktail Mixers LLC here in Evans, um, doesn't even sell food. And they also have specials where they have bottomless mimosas, which is also a violation of the ordinances six-ninety-two-A-three, which says that you can't furnish anybody an unlimited number of alcoholic beverages, which is bottomless. So I guess my question, and the clarification that I came here for, was if some businesses don't have any action taken on them, and some have them revoked, and some have them suspended, what is, where is the criteria of suspension versus revocation? Because that criteria doesn't seem to exist in the code of ordinances.
Chris, you wanna take a stab at that?
Sure. So each situation is different. Uh, I think there are, the board has a discretion in any given, uh, cert, you know, set of circumstances. I can tell you that, at least since I've been county attorney, that when they're presented with information, such as you've presented, they investigate and they take action. That action is gonna be dependent on, uh, the set of circumstances and the board that sits in front of, uh, that applicant or that, uh, license holder. So I don't know about the last one. I do, I do believe they took advantage, or, uh, took action on Riverwood Restaurant.
Riverwood?
Or the.
Ironwood?
Ironwood, yeah.
Okay. And what action was taken?
I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay. So, you know, I looked up today as well, some previous occurrences of liquor licenses getting revoked in the state of Georgia. And almost all of them come up under, the violent crimes were attracted to that location. They were also doing other things, like they had a hair salon in there, or they were selling to minors, or whatever, or even have multiple violations, uh, to have their liquor licenses revoked. So, again, my, my other question, my main question here is, for what reason exactly was Stay's license revoked versus suspended?
Again, that's, that's a discretionary action of the board. They had the right, all I know is, is legally, they had the right to make the action that they had. We had it litigated, it was approved by the judge. So as far as going into the reasons behind it, they don't, they don't have to give the reasons. Their reasons have to be legitimate enough for the judge to approve the actions which he did.
And is there any kind of, um, plan to add any criteria in the code of ordinances as to whether a license will be suspended or revoked?
You have to restate that.
So right now, the code of ordinances doesn't state the criteria for which a license should be suspended versus being revoked. So will that verbiage get added?
Much of there is criteria. It said fifty percent alcohol, fifty percent food.
He's asking what's, how do we know what the punishment's gonna be? And it is, it's, it's a little bit of a gray area, and it gives the body that's making that decision the, the latitude to decide where on that spectrum.
Yeah, and it's based on circumstances. So, you know, every, again, like I said, every situation is different. In this situation, they were given public funds on their business, that's one thing that's different. They had to produce their, uh, financials, uh, based on a promissory note that had a development authority. That's, you know, again, every situation's different, um, and they have discretion whether or not to revoke or, and, and that's within the board's discretion.
All right. All I have. Thanks.
Amanda Watts? And if you just state your name and address to the record, please.
Amanda Watts. I reside at forty-fourteen Fairfax Street, Martinez, Columbia County. My first question is, when an email is sent to the commissioners, what is the turnaround time to expect a response when a question is asked?
Depends on who you ask it to, and what did you ask, and.
Connie, Commissioner Skinner, Commissioner. It was emailed to y'all December twenty-second. So I'm asking, what is the appropriate turnaround time to expect a response from y'all in a general?
Depends on the subject, then.
Three days?
The, the, the legal answer is, the legal answer is, asking a question, there is no requirement for the commission to respond. They can and often do, depends on the situation. If you're asking for a document that's a, it's part of a, uh.
I, I, excuse me, I was asking for a full, an investigation into food sales numbers in other establishments, food establishments in the county.
So to extent, if there's any documents that would be applicable to your request, uh, that aren't protected, then those would be produced. If, if there are no.
Turnaround time of what?
There are no responsive, and within, well, it's within three days, we have to respond, but if it, it takes longer to gather, and then we have to give a response within those three days, saying that we're working on it.
Okay, so we're at day eleven, and of course, there was holidays in there, so I should expect some sort of, hey, we got, got it. Would you agree, Ms. Connie? I've got it, we're working on it, be right with you. It is, yes, and, yeah. Uh, I did not, uh, write A, B, C, D, or E.
So there were requests, I mean, I don't know, I haven't, I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, well, if I can, I have it here, and so basically, I was asking for, requesting a full investig, I mean, we're curious, I am curious, your citizens of the county are curious. We don't know what other food sales are. We only know what Backyard Tavern was, or was not, and we know what Stay's Social Tap and Tables was in twenty-twenty during the global pandemic at forty-seven-point-seven.
Were you asking for documents?
I was asking to, for.
So if you're asking for an investigation, that's asking for an action, which they do or do not, you know, they don't have to respond to that, they don't, it's within their discretion. But if you're asking for documents, they legally have to give you responsive documents. There's a, there's.
So I need to reword it to, I would like to request documents of food sales.
Yes.
Correct, got you. All right. So I should expect zero response from this one?
Again, it's within their discretion whether or not to respond, but.
Mr. Skinner, are you gonna respond to me?
Yeah, I don't have a response to you.
You don't, or you do?
About, about the, uh, food sales.
I'm sorry, you do, or you, you won't, you do not?
I did have a comment.
Okay, but if I.
Haven't done an audit, ma'am.
On who?
Far, I guess you want, you're asking for the audit of a particular establishment.
Yeah, just, I wasn't curious to know what everybody else is doing. You, you know, you're very, we needed to know what Stay Social Tap and Table was, so I'm curious to know what everybody else is doing. My email also included, similar to Mr. Price's here. I'm interested into knowing why it is allowed for Sweet Ten to give away free drinks, which, by the way, ladies, tonight at seven, if you wear your cowgirl boots or your hat, you get a free drink first, tonight. So that is.
You know, has, we find out some of them, of folks telling us.
Oh, but.
We're gonna have to figure out who Sugar and Spice is.
Yeah, okay, so.
So sometimes.
Oh, about this one, and that is against the ordinance per Mr. Cry, Price, what he just read to you. Also, Mellow Mushroom's doing bottomless mimosas, that's against the ordinance, and of course, this sign's taken down at Ironwood Tavern suddenly, but no repercussions, there's no, it's against the ordinance, it's against what they signed for an alcohol license, but nothing's, like, nothing was done about it. They were against the ordinance, they are against the ordinance, these guys are against the ordinance, but you choose not to do anything. That concerns me, that you are not.
Scott, you wanna address the subject?
Applying.
We, we have discussed.
Laws equally throughout this county.
We have discussed how the ordinance is written and, and how we will conduct audits. There's been, and I was on record saying this before, and I'll say it again, there has been no, um, procedure laid out in the ordinance as to how we do audits of food and alcohol sales. That's never been done before.
So Stay's Social Tap and Tables audit was never done?
No, no, again, theirs was different.
Theirs is different.
They self-reported.
They, they self-reported, because they were, they were the recipient of government funds, and they had an obligation to the development authority to make a report. They made a report, when they made the report, it got brought to the attention of the board of commissioners that they were in violation.
Because you asked for Robbie Bennett.
Didn't go after them, when nobody went after Stay, the development authority had, had an obligation to get that information from Stay. She provided the op, information, and the information that she provided showed that she was in violation of the ordinance.
In what year?
In twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two.
But those were not financial.
And listen, I'm, I'm not gonna get into a debate with you.
I want to know what.
No, see.
The community does, too.
You, if you do the open records request, then you can get all the information.
I have seen the open records request results, actually.
You have?
Yes.
Okay, so you have more information than, than you're saying have.
Difference between these establishments here and Stay Social Tap and Table. Since the doors were open in August fourteenth, twenty-twenty, Stay has been, uh, welcome to all in the community from day one. Didn't matter who you were or what you looked like, it was an open door for everybody in this county that you speak for. To include, she, Renee, the owner of Stay, and her team have been with other members of the community, have, um, supported, shared profits and fundraising for male suicide prevention. We've done breast cancer awareness, uh, profits went to that. We've catered and hosted, uh, leukemia and lymphoma society events, pet adoptions. Uh, there's a new program in Columbia County schools called Resilient Teens. Uh, self-harm and suicide in Columbia County went up two-hundred percent. We hosted an event for that, fundraised and shared profits with that organization right here in Columbia County. That's the difference between us and those other establishments. We also supported Gay Pride Month and had a drag show. I'm wondering if that is the difference between us and them, and why the revocation of the license was taking place. So I'm curious, is that the reason? Is that the reason you guys chose?
Absolutely not.
Absolutely not.
Notice we had of this was June-ish, and we waited and, and didn't take action till when? October?
Octoberish.
Get the numbers right, make sure your numbers are right. So absolutely not. Actually, when I, speaking for myself, when I saw that they had the, the drag show, my first thought was, okay, this is gonna turn into a drag show thing, not what it's all about, which is, you had to be fifty-fifty. But back to the point at hand, it was a, we have an ordinance, borrowed the money, it was self-reported, and did, we didn't have an audit function, because we didn't check people. She gave us the information, we're required to act, and I'm actually.
Robbie Bennett, because I had a meeting with him July twenty-seventh.
I'm actually the one. Said.
She didn't give it to you guys.
Which ones we, uh, which would, we enforce and don't enforce. Since then, we're going forward with and working on it now. Every restaurant in Columbia County will now be reporting. They'll be, they're all required to be self-reported.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So you are making changes to the ordinance?
Absolutely.
That is the answer to what Chris asked. Okay.
It's in process, it'll be in place this year. Actually, maybe you can tell me, Scott, a better time, but, at any rate. Moving forward with that, before we did an audit, folks, she gave us the information, we were required to act.
So the drag show had nothing to do with each of your decisions that voted to revoke the license?
Absolutely not.
Ma'am, when the drag show stuff was going on, there were folks inundating us with hate mail. Why are you letting this happen? That's illegal, you can't. And I think you'd be surprised to know that every person up here with us would reply, as hard as it was, whether you like drag shows or not, you say, you know what? Nobody's naked, nobody's touching small children, nobody's doing anything illegal, we couldn't stop it if we wanted to. We defended her in a lot of ways. Now, we didn't go put up a sign saying, yay, drag shows, but we stood there and, and put people in the eye and explained that it's not illegal.
I, I have seen the results for the open records request. I have seen. I have seen the results for the open records request, I have seen them, I've seen about a handful, a minority of people saying, no drag show, no drag show, but no, nobody's gonna know to email you, oh, yay, drag show, but when the possibility of a suspension or revocation for Stay, where they love the, you know, the establishment that they go to, their families go to, they bring their families out of town, go to, when they realized that was in jeopardy, the majority of people in the opens record request results were for Stay to keep it. So you, the three that voted against it that are here today, did not go with the majority of the people of Columbia County, once it was in jeopardy.
You're suggesting that we targeted that business because?
I am very much suggesting it, and that is what is, that is what the people that you represent believe, except for the few, the minority, and it is very, it was not that, compared to what you're getting and what you've received for, to keep Stay, and what kind of establishment it really is, outside of June 2022, the majority is, was for to keep Stay in business. And I think you guys missed out on an opportunity, clearly, because, you know, we, the good things were happening there, we just supported a group for one month, and now we can't do anything for anybody else.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
All right.
I don't believe we have an executive session. Only one more motion needs to be made.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned.